Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the July 29th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Bev Beidelman will be coming back to us. She's planning, hopefully, to retire in the near future to give our prayer, but today I was reading in Romans, so it's Romans 16 verse 6, I believe. "In his grace God has given us different gifts for doing certain things well. So if God has given you the ability to prophesy, speak out with as much faith as God has given you. If your gift is serving others, serve them well. If you are a teacher, teach well. If your gift is to encourage others, be encouraging. If it is giving, give generously. If God has given you leadership ability, take the responsibility seriously, and if you have a gift for showing kindness to others, do it gladly." We had a lot of things that happened over the last week, a lot of tragedies, so I would just ask that God be with all those families that are suffering with the loss of family members and friends. I have the dog this morning. We could do it the easy way or we could do it the hard way. Good morning. This is our dog from the kennel this morning. It's a male. How old is he?
Six.
Six months old. He will be available tomorrow, so if you're interested in getting a dog, come out to our kennel. Instead of going and paying big bucks for a dog, save one from our kennel. They're really sweet and lovable and I'm sure this guy will be taken home quickly. He's got cute little markings. The best way to catch a dog is to run away from it. See that? Madam Clerk?
At 9:45 we'll have a presentation by 4H, under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
No appropriations, no transfers, no advances, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez?
He wasn't ready.
Well, we do have a number of potential hires. Children's Family First Council Record Center, and Maintenance Custodial, actually, Job and Family Services, we should talk about those. Also, United Steelworkers America ratified their contract with us at 9/1. They voted on it. I just want to let you know what's going on with that. I don't have the final copies, but we should discuss the final proposal that was made.
It's approved?
They approved it.
Okay.
I just don't have the summaries yet. Also, potential sale and purchase of real estate and ongoing legal matters. All those topics will have an assumption act for executive session discussion, so that's at the conclusion of a regular board meeting. We go into executive session, we talk about those issues. Thank you.
Authorized various payments for indigent veterans in accordance with the Highway Revise Code 5901.25. $1,000 to Wires Bowling Funeral Home, Alariah, for Andrew E. Liptak III. And $1,000 to Boyer &amp; Coole Home for funerals, Lorraine, for Frederick Dwayne Gilbert.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Approve the salary adjustment for new Alariah Muni Court bailiff Craig D. Demon, effective August 3rd, 2015, at a bi-weekly rate of $846.16, which reflects the county's two-fifth share since Martin H. Ebell will retire July 31st.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under Community Development, award contract to J.D. Indoor Comfort Sheffield in the amount of $3,914.57, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders for Danny and Ashley Payne at 915 East Drive Sheffield Lake for a furnace replacement. Thirteen invitations to bid were sent out, one received, this being the best and most responsive, and will be paid from the CHIP OHTF home repair account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, enter into plan for the transfer funds allocated for Ohio Department Job and Family Services for state fiscal year 15 in the amount not to exceed $575,000 from Income Maintenance Control Fund to CSEA, and CSEA is to cover any ceiling excess for state match.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, approve the two marketing development grants for various projects. One, Lorraine County Agricultural Society in the amount of $2,817.32 for message boards, literature racks, entryway maps, and AquaZorb maps. And Lorraine County Drug and Alcohol Services in the amount of $3,176.54 for recycling containers and bike racks.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under Common Pleas, adult probation, approve grant agreement in the amount of $325,000 with the Ohio Department of Rehab and Correction, Division of Patrol, and Community Services, Bureau of Community Sanctions for Smart Ohio Pilot Funding Grant, which is effective July 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, receive and journalize the annual report on the condition of ditches under County Maintenance Fund for the year 2015. Authorize the auditor to continue maintenance rates as recommended by the engineer to clean and maintain various county ditches for the year 2016, tax lien year 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Award contract to Singus Construction Lagrange in the amount of $287,282.50 for Blanch Avenue Bridge 0032 replacement and Fuller Road Bridge 0069 deck replacement, Carlisle Township. This was the only bid received. Issue notice to proceed honor before August 14th and complete honor before November 14th. Authorize administrator to notify the auditor to release retainage at the completion of the project, and 65% will be paid from OPWC, 35% will be paid from the MBGT Engineering Project Bridge Account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Request no access to place Vermont Street Bridge replacement and Kirk Street Bridge replacement projects on their transportation plan for federal funds. Authorize engineer to execute applications. Vermont Street Bridge replacement for fiscal year 2021, project cost is $580,000. 80% LBR funding is $464,000 and 20% local of $116,000. Kirk Street Bridge replacement fiscal year 2021, project cost is $1,157,000. 80% LBR funding is $1,205,600 and 20% is $301,400.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Kiber, the Kirk Street Bridge, are they not already working on that bridge? Because I got a call one day from a reporter asking about access in and out of the...
Yeah, you're correct. In order to keep the bridge open until it was replaced, we, our maintenance crews replaced some of the stringers, so we closed the bridge down, did those repairs. I think I was in touch with a couple. That was the road where there was a no man's land, where we closed the bridge, then the railroad stopped the train at the same time, and the residents were trapped.
Yeah.
So we got that worked out, the bridge is open again, but as you can see, the funding is not to 2021, so we had to make repairs to keep that open. Typically, when we apply for the funding, it's five years out.
Right, that's a long time from now. I was wondering if that was a typo or not. Okay, thank you.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
We have no additional comments this morning. We got a pretty long morning of things to do.
Mr. Prewoski?
Nothing.
Commissioners report.
Well, I had my annual goodwill meeting this past week. I was elected to be secretary, so that was nice. We are going to have our fundraiser October 3rd at Rosewood, so mark your calendars. It's far off, but it's going to be 6 to 10, and it's going to be a casino night, so it'll be a lot of fun. Yesterday, we had our IAC meeting, and the treasurer unfortunately is keeping at his $1.2 million estimate for this year, so hopefully we'll get a little bit more than that. He's kind of conservative. A little conservative, a lot conservative. Also, I want to commend Lisa Hobart last week for her presentation, and I asked her to send that out to all of our elected officials and department heads, because I think it was a very telling story of how we are where we are in the county and our financial picture. So I think she's...
It went out.
It went out, good. So I asked a lot of people that I seen this past week to look at that, and they were very surprised, so, end of my report.
As Commissioner Crossley said, Investment Advisory Committee met, but also Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce Board meeting was last Thursday morning. An update, the chamber's in very good condition in regards to retaining members and adding new ones, in great financial status. Tony Gallo's doing a great job as the new president of the organization, and it's moving forward, so that's the end of my report, because we covered everything else together.
I'd like to thank Lisa as well, too, for that great presentation last week. I had a couple people tell me they saw the meeting on cable and were quite informed by just what our financial future looks like. I have to admit, though, I was a little disappointed that we didn't really see any of the media outlets pick up on the story. I know as a former reporter, financial stories were sometimes deemed not to be very exciting, but I think it's important for the public to know the severity of our future finances. Had a chance to attend the Taste of the South held in Alariah at South Rec, and well-attended event. Nice weather as well, too, and great car show, too, if you're into cars. It was just a super event, good food, good people, and a good auto show there as well, too. Mexican Mutual had their Scholarship Fund Steak Fry on Saturday. Always love going to Mexican Mutual, always get a good reception over there, and a lot of fun people and a good conversation. Also, congratulations to Cudi Catanzare on her 90th birthday. She's been very involved with helping many public servants over the decades to provide good services for the citizens of Lorraine County. Also attended the Investment Advisory Meeting the other day, and certainly not receiving the interest we used to receive in the past. And had a great evening over at the lakefront last night at Avon Lake as the Avon Lake Democrats held their yearly cookout. So it was a busy week, I think, for all of us.
Mayor Zilka was cooking for us, and he did a nice job, and we had a, the woman who's talked about the Affordable Care Act did a good job presenting her.
Yeah, it was very good. I mean, the presentation was very good.
Lot of good information.
The Commissioners have sent a proclamation to Anne Ixton, Child Support Enforcement Agency. She's retiring. Board Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Liz Share, 4H?
Okay, which one of you guys are taking the puppy?
Liz was talking about it.
I keep having to remind myself I cannot have another dog yet. My dog would appreciate it, I'm sure. So we're here today just to present real quick an OSU extension update, which covers 4H programs currently, and then some future efforts that we are wanting to work on to expand extension in OSU's outreach here in Ohio and in Lorraine County. So my name's Elizabeth Share. I'm the new extension educator here for 4H Positive Youth Development. I got my BSM, my MS at Ohio State University in Animal Sciences, and where I kind of specialized in equine microbiology, but I also have an extensive background in youth development with the horse program, both adult and youth extension, as well as some Skillathon curriculum building. So 4H Positive Youth Development, 4H is a community of young people across America who are learning leadership, citizenship, and life skills, and we're all about having fun through experiential learning. 4H gives youth the chance to pursue their own interests, anything from photography to robotics, cooking, sewing, to raising livestock as well. And then in 2014 and 15, here in Lorraine County, we have 1,991 youth registered in our program, in our 4H program, and in addition to that, we have those involved in after-school and in-school program, programmings like Chick Quest, Real Money, Real World, where we have over 500 students that are not currently enrolled, but also involved in our enrichment programs. So some of the things we're going to update you on today will be the residential camps, our junior camp at Kelly's Island, and our Cloverbud camp, the school enrichment programs like Chick Quest and Real Money, Real World, as well as our mentoring programs with Youth Family Promise. So to do that, I'm going to have some of our adult and youth volunteers kind of give you a quick update.
One of the programs that we've done this year, and it's with the initiative from the government, is the new STEM camp that we introduced this year. We had the opportunity to bring 25 students to the Ag Office and participate in different activities, including robotics. The students were able to program their own robotic device and actually make it do different challenges, including drive a great distance and then turn around and come back. At the same time, they were able to do hands-on experiments that we can't always get to in the classroom because of size. So that's one of our camps that we're able to put on this year.
Okay, with our YFP 4H mentoring program, it's a mentoring program that we connect adults as well as older youth, high school level, that come into the school programs and work with these kids on, we work to get a one-on-one, teaching these children how to have better character, give them the opportunity to participate in some STEM programs as well, so we're getting the educational level there as well. With that, we also, the kids participated in a project line-ness where they prepared blankets that they took and donated, so they're giving back to the community as well, so we're teaching community service. The goal with this program is to help make our youth stronger and productive citizens who can make good decisions and have a care for others. With the 4H projects that we cover, it also gives them hands-on activities, which is an extension of our STEM program, and with that, it helps them to be better students in the classroom and hopefully be able to do better as they head into high school, because we work with 6th to 8th graders with this.
Can you talk just real quickly about what some of the topics you covered are?
Sure.
And then also where you're getting your mentors, and then how many kids, which schools you're in?
Sure. At this point, we're at the Derling Middle School, which is part of Clearview. We're at Westwood Middle School and Northwood Middle School, which are both part of the Alariah school systems. We touched about 140 students this year between the three sites. The mentors that I have coming in are through 4H mentors, as well as we've hooked in with Office on Aging, so we have some of the retired members of the community who have stepped up and come in and helped these kids, and we actually brought one of our mentors onto our camp program this year, which has helped out a lot as well. So we're pulling a lot of information from outside with giving them life skills. One of my mentors that I've utilized a lot this year is a retired nuclear engineer, so he's brought a lot of, you know, interest into the kids and given them the opportunity to experiment with a lot of different activities. We did first aid in action, we did drug and alcohol abuse awareness with the students in all three schools. I had a positive experience that come out of that, where was not one of our students that we worked with that got into trouble, but they were the whistleblower that got the help that was needed for four other students in their school this past year. So that was a positive that came back from the director. Oh, okay, I go on to Real Money. Real Money, Real World is a financial literacy program that we work with ages, grade 6 through 12 as well. And with this, we meet with the students for once a week, for five weeks. The sixth week, we do assimilation. It's like a big game of life, where we have volunteers come in from the community, we ask bankers to come in to deal with the banking station, railtors to come in to help with the housing, car dealers come in to talk to the kids about buying automobiles, as well as other volunteers that we can pull from the community, from our volunteers through the 4H program. They can give them a lot of real-life experiences. Through the assimilation, they then have to make real-life choices. Do I buy a $100,000 house, or do I start off with an apartment? They're given a career and a family that, from the very first day, and then we work through the paycheck, how they, you know, what they think they're going to get at a $40,000 job, turns out not $40,000 cash in their pocket, and so they have to learn how to make the choices that you and I all have to make every day. And with this, the students get the opportunity also to research careers and what education is required for this. Many times, the students come into the classroom and they tell us, "Oh yeah, I want to do da-da-da-da-da." And after they have to go home and research that career, find out what education is required for that career, many times they will come back and say, "No, I don't think I want to do that now," and they look at other careers. So it helps them make choices before they get into high school, which is the best time to get a hold of them, so they know how to make and plan for their high school and then on to college afterwards.
We have a lot of, the biggest things that come back from that through the evaluation, we evaluate every child that goes through that, and then we collect that data and information, both quantitatively and qualitatively, and the antidote that comes back the most often is, "I really appreciate my parents now. I didn't realize the challenges that they had to make these decisions. I'm going to help them out more." We also have a lot of kids talking about delayed parenting and thinking about what their goals are and how to achieve some of the career aspirations that they've been introduced to.
Childcare has shocked a lot of the parents that have come in and volunteered to help, as well as the students. That is a big one. It comes back as the cost of childcare, and it's a good idea to delay that.
If I could just touch on the financial literacy component, I just think trying to reach the students before they go off to college is really critical. Research now shows that the leading reason for students dropping out of college is credit card debt. They get off to school. I mean, it's amazing how these credit card companies will send credit cards to individuals who don't even have a job, for Pete's sakes. And, but yeah, the biggest reason is they end up, you know, putting their books on the credit cards, or they end up wanting to get some new clothes while they're at school, and then all of a sudden, mom and dad say, "Well, you're the one who drove up the credit card, so now you can take some time off and go work at the grocery store, pay this off, go back to school," and maybe they don't get back on course and go back to school, which will greatly change their lives forever, but, so I just couldn't stress enough that if you can definitely touch base with the young adults right before they go off to college, so they can avoid the credit card debt trap and end up having to drop out of school, that would be great.
That is one of the categories that we do discuss very heavily with charts, that show them how their little $100 purchase, fun night, if they don't pay that off right away, and they just make the bare minimum with the high interest rates, how it's now cost them how much. And it's very eye-opening, and they're very shocked when they do see that.
We also help them see the accumulation of wealth based on saving early, even if it's smaller amounts. You make a good point. I work at Ohio State, and on the main campus, they actually have people with credit card vendors there who will give out free frisbees.
You need to get closer to the microphone. Thank you.
And on that campus, and other campuses across America, they, I think, stopped doing this now, but they used to give out free frisbees for an application for credit without even talking about that. We actually have started a booster program that's going to be implemented in Medina County in the next year for high school, because a lot of the FCS programs, Family and Consumer Science programs within the schools have been eliminated, but there's still a desire for the financial literacy. So we're going to be doing that, and then after that's piloted there, we're going to be expanding that here in Lorraine County, but this year, we're going beyond the three schools and adding additional schools with the capacity.
Yeah, I actually, when I was in Columbus, had legislation that, I actually got out of the House, that was going to eliminate the marketing, the credit cards on the college campuses. And the Senate then would not take up the bill and hear the bill, but we did get it out of the House. It was a bipartisan bill, and unfortunately, the greatest pushback I got was from the Ohio State University.
Are you kidding me? Boy, you just tell me who they are.
Talk to Rep. meeting.
Well, these universities, I mean, just so you know for background, they actually, you know, they receive a commission of sorts or a contractual payment from the credit card companies and the banks, and I think it was well over a couple million dollars a year to be able to have access.
They backed off of that now.
Right.
Good morning. I'm Brenda Teeters. I'm a retired educator here from the county, but I've been a volunteer in the 4H program for 25 years. I now have grandchildren in the program, so that's my investment. On June 23rd and 24th at the Carlisle Visiting Center, we had 52 campers for two days. We had 17 trained teen counselors and 11 adult staff. We did a Cloverbud camp, and it was dynamite. We learned about dinosaurs, which ones eat meat and which ones eat plants, and these campers were full of energy, but they're our future program and future leaders of our community here. We invite you to come to the Lorraine County Fair and see their artwork. They're our future. They're our future. Thank you.
Smores, snores, and the great outdoors. The Junior Fair Camp this year was a huge success. 106 campers participated in smore-themed activities with 2014 counselors and the adult staff from July 6th to the 10th at the 4H camp on Kelly's Island. Activities included smore-making, archery, canoeing, and even a 1980s-themed dance. Campers also made cabin songs and performed them at one of the campfires. Quarry fishing, shipbuilding, and developing into microscopic pond life were also activities that the campers enjoyed. More photos of the 2015 4H Junior Camp can be found on the Lorraine County 4H News, the Lorraine County 4H New Facebook page. Come check us out.
Bailey, what was your favorite part about being a counselor?
Getting to learn like more responsibility with kids, because I'm an only child, so I don't deal with kids a lot. So it was fun seeing like how their personalities come out and how close they get to you within five days, and you could hear all about their life, and don't you dare ask a question, because you're going to get hours and hours of stories. So it's fun. I enjoyed it a lot.
Nice.
How many hours of training did you do?
25 hours of training?
Nice, very nice.
I just wanted to give a big thank you to the community sponsors we had this year for our camps, not only donating just so we could have the kids come to camp, a lot of our campers were at least partially assisted with the fee for coming to camp, and I know with the numbers and the kids that we got, they were just overjoyed to come, and it was nice to get away and have a safe place to interact with our counselors and have some of these fun activities. We had the Lorraine County Prosecutor's Office, the Lorraine County 4H Committee, 4H Endowment, Liberty Ford Vermilion Collision Center, and Youth Family Promise 4H Mentoring that helped sponsor our camp registration fees. And then Norwalk Plumbers and Steamfitters Local 42, Brumke Insurance Agency, Zip Tech, Brumke Law, CNC Sales and Services, The Golf Cart Place, Choo Choo's Coffee Shop, and Z Graphics by Zan actually donated money toward our T-shirts, so that the kids for Cloverbud and Junior Camp could go away with a commemorative T-shirt for their time at camp. So we wanted to give a very large thank you to them, because we couldn't do this without them.
I just want to say real quickly, the camp counselors go through 25 hours of training. There's 15 different topics that are mandatory for them to learn related to the safety of children, working with young kids, and being team builders and team leaders. And we also have a curriculum called Camp Works that actually helps them understand that these skills are transferable into the workplace and into their lives afterward. So they go through a lot, and I give them kudos. We also are expanding our office to currently, we've increased it by way of bringing in a program assistant for SNAP Ed, which is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. This individual works closely with folks and participants with limited resources to help them understand nutrition, finances, budgeting, making grocery lists and menu planning, how to utilize food if they would receive it from the food pantries, thinking about saving. We work into Ohio Saves into that. And then that kind of family piece around nutrition with a real aim at, again, increasing their ability to overcome food insecurity and also to budget well and to reduce obesity within families for an overall health goals. We have a new person that's doing that. Her name is Diana Good. She's here from the community. She's had 23 years in school, food service in various Lorain County schools. She's got a degree in consumer science education, and then she's already making, she's been over here about two weeks, and she's making contacts already with Community Care and Clearview Local Schools, and she's kind of making a whole lot of different contacts right now. So you'll hear more about the impacts of that as we come through. Those dollars come from federal grants, federal dollars, the SNAP program, so that doesn't cost the county anything, but by way of having an OSU Extension Office here and operating is how we're eligible for that. So we're very excited about what she's going to be able to do for us. Related to future efforts, I know a lot of times we call it the 4-H Office. We've heard that a lot, and we have a tremendous, obviously, 4-H Youth Development Program. And if you look at the longitudinal studies related to Tufts' recent research, you'll see that a lot of our kids who go through this program are going to college more often. They're achieving higher career aspirations. They're getting in trouble with the courts less, and we can provide you with those statistics. But in addition to 4-H and the strength of that program here in the county, we also want to rebuild after kind of the financial situations we've all faced over the last 10 years. We've had to really downsize in our office. So we've had in the past the Family and Consumer Science Programs where we've talked about family strength building, financial budgeting, and we do the three healthies: healthy families, healthy people, and healthy finances. And so we want to be able to bring that back. Our start was with SNAP Ed, but I also want to, I'm talking currently with our state program leader to do a pilot that would bring through the SNAP dollars initially, but then graduated back the cost of that to either other partners or cost recovery or county appropriation partnerships for an FCS educator. So the first year would be SNAP Ed, paying for it 100%. The next year would be a cost share of 50% each, and then the final year would be moving off of the SNAP dollars toward the alternate funding. We want to be able to get that person in place and really make some differences related to some of the existing demands that we still have in the community. They do a great job of cost recovery and research dollars that helps offset some of the cost of that. And then I'm also in conversations with our state leader in the area of community development and Ag and Natural Resources. We get a tremendous number of calls related to Ag and Natural Resources in our office with home horticulture. We have a ton of small farms that aren't working with industry individuals. We get probably 10 to 20 calls a week, and that's a modest amount. And that's simply because a lot of people stopped calling our office, because they're calling my other counties. And so we have folks from Medina County and Erie County especially who've been helping out a lot. So in my conversations with the state leaders, they actually have another pilot program that they've offered out, that I'll know later this week whether they've accepted my proposal, which is to have a split with an Ag and Natural Resource educator for either 50% time or 75% time, and a split with community development. And so they're willing and interested in piloting that for two years at no cost to the county, with us then having to, in the next couple of years, figure out how to transition that cost away from those pilot dollars. So I wanted to let you know, you're going to be seeing a lot of those empty rooms that have been there for a couple of years now start to be refilled, and we'll be demonstrating the return on investment and the impact related to those programs in future updates. So we wanted to thank the generous support over the last few years especially. Judge James T. Walters has really been a significant contributor to keeping our office functional. Lorain County Commissioners, of course, friends of the Junior Fair, who we're working very closely with, and Solid Waste. And then also, I didn't have them on this slide, but I want to make sure that we recognize the Community Foundation, Lorain County Community Foundation, and the Norton Foundation have given us dollars, which have helped pay for Julie Mackey's position, which is that mentoring program. And then they've also just recently granted us dollars to hire a program assistant who's focused solely on school enrichment programs related to science, technology, engineering, and math. So those hires will happen here soon. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Very nice presentation. I think since they've been affected by our budgetary cuts too, maybe we should send that to them also. Don't mind.
I think we're at public comment.
Come on up. Can you switch us over, Jim? Thank you. Okay. You're on. Good morning.
Mr. Cortez, my name is Timothy Williams, and this is Pastor Lewis Kayaton. And we are part of an executive team that is organizing a big, huge event that's going to really impact our community. On September the 11th and 12th, we're sponsoring an event, coordinating an event called Hope Over Heroin. As I'm sure you all are aware, the reality that heroin, the epidemic, the devastating that it's, that it's causing our families and our community, is just beyond what we ever imagined. And it's just enlarging at a capacity that we can't really handle. We've been in a lot of meetings with the Coroner. We've been proud of Project Dawn. We've seen the impact of what Narcan is doing and helping, but this is an epidemic that's just reaching all levels. So part of what we've done is our faith communities in Lorain County have come together, and we are leading an event, an activity, that's not just about faith, it's about all sectors. Lori's been a participant. We know many of our family members, friends have been impacted by this epidemic, and so we're coming together and we're making a statement. Pastor Kayaton will give you a bit more details about that, but this is really an all-out community effort, and we have faith-based organizations, we have governmental organizations, social service organizations coming together to make a statement that we're not going to stand idle while this epidemic takes over our community, and we're going to fight it, and we're going to encourage folks, we're going to empower them. And we would love for the, of course, it's for Commissioners, we'll send you a packet that gives you more detailed information about exactly what we're trying to accomplish, what the methodology is, what the ideology around it is. We are existing community leaders. We've been involved in this from a level of schools, from the addiction side of it, the treatment side of it, and it's sparing no one. It doesn't care what your walk of life is, it doesn't care what your economic status is, it doesn't care what your educational status is. It's attacking everyone, so we want you to be aware of that. Lori has been, again, a participant in some of the planning meetings, and it's going to be coming big. So this is kind of an early announcement, and it's getting bigger and bigger. So I want to, again, introduce Pastor Kayaton, who was the visionary for this event, and he'll share a little bit more. And again, thank you for the support that you've given us so far, and we'll be letting you know the other things that are up and coming.
Thanks. Thanks, Jim. My name is Lewis Kayaton. Been pastoring in Lorain for now 36 years, and seeing our community demographics change. I've seen challenges come and go, but we've always been able to meet them, and I think this heroin epidemic is one that we can also address. September 11th and 12th, there'll be a rally at Black River Landing in the evening on that Friday night. Saturday in the afternoon, we're going to do a march down Broadway. We're hoping to get about 300 to 500 bikers to lead us down, roar down Broadway with about a couple thousand people at least, saying, "Hey, look, we're unified and we're together in this." I believe the figure is 67 Lorain Countyans lost their life to heroin overdoses last year, and we were just with the Coroner last week, and I believe we're at number 33 or four currently this year. It's too many. One is too many. And so we feel like if we can work together with the churches and some of our agencies in the county, which are amazing, I'm getting to learn some pretty powerful agencies and people that are doing great jobs, like Lakota and Project Dawn, and some of the others, Drug and Alcohol, Lorain County Board, just really doing the job day in and day out. But it's going to take all of us, and that's our goal. Of course, we have the faith piece that we're bringing, and we believe that a person is, you know, body, soul, and spirit, and needs to have that connection with God and the power of God to be able to help them overcome this very devastating and life-destructing drug. So that's our goal, and we're seeing a lot of interest from just about every sector, and we're excited to be able to stand for Lorain County to say, "There is hope over heroin." And we're not looking at just one event. We're looking at an ongoing project, working with the agencies. Now that we're developing relationships, get to know each other, it seems like we could do a whole lot more together than we can individually. So we have the boots on the ground, so to speak. We represent thousands of people in this faith-based community in our county who are saying, "We're going to do it." For example, the night or the day the Rover Fest was down at Black River Landing, we got nearly a couple hundred people to go out and just clean up parks in the city of Lorain, just as an act of kindness to say, "We can make a difference." And there are people that are energized for this. So thank you for hearing us today, and we appreciate all that you do for our county, and we're here to help and to assist against this epidemic called heroin. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pastor.
Anyone else wishing to address the board? Are we going to do that, is that going to be a trailer, or are we doing it as part of the meeting for the video?
Part of the meeting. See if we can do a trailer.
I mean, are we doing it now?
Doing what?
Doing the video from the Fidos event. Were we planning on doing that during the meeting or as a trailer?
We could do it. Do you have the Fidos event? Or we just run it now?
Okay. I reported, I think, last week, the Fidos event in Avon at Bar 145. They did an event, and half the proceeds are going to our Lorain County Dog Kennel for our spay and neuter program. One of the people involved in that fundraiser put together a really nice video that was playing at the event, and I asked her to give me a copy of it, so we're going to play it for you. Never mind, never mind.
No, it's still there.
Yeah. Bernie. At the bottom.
Just that. Fuck. Take that off. Stay at the bottom. That's why I got something for us. No, it's still there. Just try to hold it up. Okay.
Well, thanks for being patient through the other night. It was kind of long, I know, and it reminded me of those commercials where it says, send money now. So we're not asking anybody to send any money in or anything, but a lot of good information. Hopefully we, thank you. Get more volunteers. You could always volunteer if you don't have money to donate or if you can't take any more dogs as an adoption, so. Where are we at? Just, is there anybody else that wanted to address the board this morning? Seeing none, I move, we go into executive session as outlined by the administrator.
Second.
Ms. Kaski.
Aye.
Mr. Lindy.
Aye.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Aleria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.